I'll just make an order. This time I'm going to ask Vice Chair Mr. Flaherty to let us in please, please.
I plead to leave to the flag of the United States of America in good republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty.
Yes, sir.
Like this welcome everybody to, uh, this I believe is our second of three meetings, special call meetings in regards to trying to finalize the zoning, uh, in regards to Stewart's Creek High School. I will mention that, uh, our next meeting is scheduled December 4th at 5:30 and hopefully at that time, uh, we'll be able to come away with a decision. So tonight, uh, I know all of us have been contacting, uh, made contact with Mr. Oldham, Mr. Morgan in reference to questions and stuff, so, uh, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Oldham, let him go, uh, go over everything and, and tonight we won't be voting on anything. Uh, I believe Mr. Oldham probably recommend to us what, uh, what he's going to propose and, uh, gives us about a couple of weeks to decipher everything before we hopefully can vote on December 4th, so, Mr. Oldham?
If some of you are watching on TV, uh, this, this is the rezoning for the new Stewart's Creek High School to the little south of Smyrna, uh, which will open in, uh, August of 2013. So that's what we're looking at and some of you may have also read that of the 20 largest enrollment high schools in the state of Tennessee, six of them are in Relaford County. So it's a necessity to, to rezone for the new school and actually the largest high school in the state was Blackman High School and that's one of the ones that we're considering. I'd like to begin tonight a little bit differently than we did the others and you have a sheet and it's also on the, on the screens projected above. Um, dealing with the rezoning initiative for tonight, because of some questions that I've had from you concerning about how many exercise the option in the past to go when we did the grandfathering option, because we did vote to grandfather juniors and seniors. So I thought it would help us to go back and look at our most recent, which would be looking at, uh, Siegel and Oakland, which was in 2003. So if you kind of look at the top of that sheet, in Oakland High School in 2002, they had 2,112 students enrolled and 2003, uh, the next year they started was 1,391 was left at Oakland. Uh, Siegel High then is opened in 2003 was 1,412 and if you notice there, I did put some of the, uh, grades, again, ninth grade was 508, 10th grade 419, 11th grade 281 and 12th grade 180. The N count is basically comprehensive development, special education, that's why the state reports that, it's kind of, it's an ungraded grade, what we're talking about there. Um, so as we would expect when you had the grandfathering, a number of students remained at Oakland, did not go to, uh, Stewart's Creek High, so that, that's why you see those smaller numbers for 11th and 12th and I fully expect you'll see the same thing when you go up to Stewart's Creek High, that's a pattern we normally see. But the question that we've gotten so many times, what, what percentage of students do we expect that might exercise a grandfather option? Of course, again, uh, we can do some estimating, but it would be better to go back and look at the numbers. So took the numbers at Oakland High School in 2002, and this is the third funding month, which is the one we typically use, the state uses the third funding month, those things are settled a little bit by then, it's one of the more accurate months. 10th grade had 554 and 11th grade had 465. Then if you look in 2003, uh, that 10th graders would have become 11th grade at that time, so that would, they were left with 265 or 289 students left or 52% of the students left in going from, uh, 10th grade to 11th grade, uh, at that time. And 12th grade, which would be seniors leaving, uh, two, uh, 12th grade at Oakland High was 296, so, which meant only 169 left or 36% of the students left. So that would not surprise me either, because students in their last year, their senior year, given the grandfather option, are much more likely to stay where they are. A junior, somebody coming in junior year has two years, two additional years of high school, might take the option to go to the new school. So between the two of those, 52% in the 11th grade, 36% in the 12th, or the, the average overall was 44.9% or about 45%. So, um, extrapolating kind of those numbers, uh, Mr. Morgan has been able to come up with a number of students that, that could exercise the option for grandfathering and that would be 819 students grandfathered into the 11th and 12th grade. If, uh, uh, and if those students left, uh, all of them, then that historically has not happened, but it'd be the 819 students would not, uh, would be grandfathered and not go to Stewart's Creek High School. But if 45% elected to go to Stewart's Creek High, then that would be 369 grandfathered students would go to Stewart's Creek High. If the 45% for the two grade kind of holds true, should be a pretty good estimate. Um, as you notice up there that, uh, that's pretty close to what happened at Siegel High, uh, because when you, you kind of look at their two numbers up there in their 11th and 12th grade, um, you see is that you're, you're approaching somewhere around 400, below 400 students or so. Um, some of that may have been people that elected to ask for a zoning exemption or something at that time to go, so, um, it's not unusual, when we open a new high school, for the junior and senior class to be a little bit smaller than the other grades and let's open with a smaller number, so, uh, that kind of is typical, looking at that. Could we go to, well, any questions on this? You might have a question, you want to talk about this thing?
Is, is this reflected in, in the big map?
It is, with the changes.
Okay.
It's reflected in the big map with the changes. Everybody got, no questions? Okay, I guess, Mr. Morgan, we're ready to go to the map. So, looking at the map, in, in some of the areas that you have requested, some, one, one was, uh, the Spring House subdivision that opened on Shores Road and that's area number five up here, if you're looking, if you're looking at your map. Uh, originally when we looked at the map, it looked like that road also opened on 96, but that part's not built out yet, so even that was shown on the map, it's, it does not, it opens up on Shores Road, so my recommendation would be to treat them the same as we did with people on the Shores Road area.
At the occasion to, to ride that subdivision Friday morning and, and it's, the distance between what's being built now and into that road, uh, you can't see, you can't see it, it's so far away, so I, I would think that that road is going to be a long way off.
And that's five students is really all we're talking about now, is Mr. Morgan's saying, that, that opened, um, up on Shores Road. The second area that some of you asked about was Clover Hill and we'll go up to that one if we could. And the reason we looked at Clover Hill, because this road, it was originally in the one going to Stewart's Creek, but it opens back on Brinkley Road, which comes down to, of course, Blackman High School. So a number of you, and, and people spoke to us that they would prefer to remain at Blackman High, since that, the road direction for them would be, um, direct access. So in that particular case, we would add back to Blackman High School and that was four students in Clover Hill, that, the number on your map would be the number of students in there. And then the other one, we had one student on Old Nashville Highway, one subdivision, we could go up and look at that, one, one parcel of property. And that's this little area with one there. Um, this area, all this subdivision goes back to Smyrna High School, but this one does open on Old Nashville Highway here, uh, it's not connected, that subdivision on this side nor on this side. And that parent basically asked us at one of the meetings, they would, even though they had the drive over here to Stewart's Creek, they would prefer just to go in and make that move, so, um, our recommendation is if we allow our students to go into Stewart's Creek High School. I think the, uh, third, uh, fourth addition, um, there was, as we looked at Seven Oaks, which is back up in the Smyrna area. If you look at that, Seven Oaks, uh, let's bring this up here. And that's, that's the largest change, that's 82 students. Um, you know, and, and of course what happened here was, is we talked about Smyrna's highest growth with the apartment complex. We found out during this process that there were six different, uh, additional apartment complexes planned for Smyrna and, uh, to be built out over the next several years and, uh, about a thousand units was the projected number for those. Uh, and all six of them were in the Smyrna zone, you know, of course we know the one that's now opening up is right at their football field. Um, actually, one of those subdivisions, by adding back Seven Oaks, we had that with the 82 students, one of those back in here is actually where a new, one of those apartment complexes would be, so it would add that apartment complex when it's built out to go to Stewart's Creek. Of course, uh, again, they can, can, uh, come out, hit Lee Victory Parkway and, and again, it's, it's not very far at all to Stewart's Creek High School, but that allows a little bit of growth for Smyrna, you know, to bring their numbers down a little bit when we stop and look at that and, um, I think helps us some, yes, sir?
And, uh, over on Old Nashville Highway on the same side of McQuinn Springs, that there's a complex that will be open here in just a matter of weeks and then Midtown, uh, condominium is, is doubling in size right adjacent to it. So we have, uh, we've got two apartment complexes plus doubling of a condominium, uh, in that, in that area that will be open or ready to, uh, occupy here in just a matter of weeks.
So, uh, if that area, then we did have some comments at the public hearings and one or two board members also mentioned it too, Adelaide Park, uh, which is on Lee Victory Parkway, you know, Smyrna High is just right up the road from there. Several of them said that if we come out our drive, of course it's a divided highway, that it would certainly make sense for them to be able to turn right and go straight to Smyrna High School, which is a very short distance away. That does involve, uh, 33 students, but I think it, it certainly is a reasonable request that we had at that time. So, um, the new enrollments, basically, looking at, at that, Laverne High would be 1780 with about 61% free and reduced. None of these changes made a, a full 1% change in free and reduce, they pretty well canceled each other out. Uh, Smyrna High would now be 1792, comes down a little bit because of the Seven Oaks. Blackman High 1794 and Riverdale High School 1950, because you have that dual zone in there also that's included in that out towards Eagleville, that'd be about 35% free and reduced. Stewart's Creek High would be 1644 with 35% free and reduced. Now those numbers would be if all of the students that were grandfathered and moved, actually moved, but we know pretty much that about 45% of those moved, if it follows what happened in Oakland and Siegel, probably will not move. So would not surprise me at all when we finish to be in the numbers very similar when Siegel opened, the 1400, upper 1300s, 1400 and that, that could, could wind up there as you work through the two years, uh, of grandfathering, basically. So we've, we've got numbers for other areas that you've talked about or called us, any of those that you'd like to see, we can, uh, call those and give you numbers to, just to tell us what you'd like to look at.
Mr. Oldham?
Yes, sir.
Do these numbers also reflect the grandfathering of the Riverdale students?
They, they do, but not in the number that, that we gave you when I said the, the 819, we took out the Riverdale out of that.
Okay. I mean, do you know, or can you say 45% of the Riverdale will go to Blackman or?
Oh, we got, we got historically there.
Okay.
Basically from the past, the most recent past, and I would say from my memory of previous times, we used to throw around numbers like 50% or so, and this would not be far off from that. I think you'll see from some older schools that you had, Oakland was, of course, was 1972 Oakland, it was a little bit older school than, uh, Stewart's Creek High, so there may have been encouraged a few more to go, um, but you've got somewhat older schools when you look at Smyrna High and Laverne High. You don't have but about 12 to 13 years from the 2000 opening of Blackman High, but I would think somewhere in that range again would be a reasonable estimate, in fact, that's about all we've got to do actually, do registration. Uh, typically a, uh, new school, when we open it, as Mr. Evans has said in the past, if we have capacity in a school, we'll allow people to apply for zoning exemption at 10 that school. I, I know from prior experience that new bricks draw, said that before, so it would not surprise me at all, but you'll have some people that are not in your rezoned area that would elect to, hey, I'd like to go to Stewart's Creek High School. So, uh, it's, that will tend to negate some of the grandfather that chooses not to come. How much, you know, that, that's hard to estimate, but... Uh, he did prepare another map, if you're interested, like to the middle school, the high school feeder, um, did not prepare it today, if you want, you're going to put that one up?
I, I can, I think he did.
Do you want to do the first one, or the job, it's up to you, what you'd like to do, he can...
Before we leave the, uh, the high schools, uh, is there anything that we can do to bring the Smyrna High School number down? Is there, is there anything else at 1792 and still we have the multiple apartment complexes that we've discussed and such, uh, have you found any other spots where that number could come back?
In, in the, in our first, in our first proposal...
I was looking back at that.
...that we came out with that, of course, one of the issues there was, um, that really did change free and use quite a bit against Smyrna High, which, uh, because of some of the areas that were left, um, I mean, I, there's not much you could do, Mr. Holliday, other than to go back to some of those areas that we changed after the first, I mean, and you can see from the map yourself, I mean, you...
Right.
It's very difficult to, you'd be, you're actually pulling out of Stewart's Creek High if you want to pull it out and send it to Stewart's Creek High, but you're in that same area that we moved out.
What is the current enrollment in Smyrna?
Smyrna High is 2,100 something, what do you?
I, I've got the second.
Wait, wait, you guys, it wasn't...
It was 1990.
1990, that new, rather than 2000.
This may be one time we hope that new bricks and mortar does attract.
Well, I mean, again, I guess it surprised me a little bit, I had forgotten some of it, that, um, Siegel High, you know, it's open with 1400, you know, at that time, um...
I can remember freshman class there, what, being about 700 at one time? Is that, is that right?
Uh, probably, during this interim period, yes, I'd say so. There were some other changes that occurred there a little bit too, and I don't remember all of it, but there were some of the Riverview section that was in, uh, that was adjusted a little bit on that, wasn't it? At the time that, uh, they were actually starting to go into Riverdale.
Where is this?
At Riverview.
Going back when?
When Siegel High opened.
Riverview was zoned Riverdale, Blackman, then Siegel, that's what we have, so, I'm pretty much muted after. Uh, pre-Blackman, it's zoned Riverdale, about half the people went to Oakland, because it's so much closer and, and zoning was just not being heavily enforced at that particular time, so it was a lot, a lot of people in Riverview were going to Oakland, but it was on Riverdale. And like I said, then Blackman, then Siegel, and I don't think there's been any split in, you know, any split of Riverview in any of that period of time.
On this Stewart's Creek, it's 1644, figure you got?
Yes, sir.
Uh, that is at 369 grandfathering, and that's all.
Uh, that would be, this, this would be your best case scenario, that, uh, those students would go to the new school, because Mr. Morgan just basically looked at his numbers on the, the available population at that time. And actually, after what you're going to see opening up because of the grandfather, Stewart's Creek will be lower than that, uh, Smyrna High, Laverne High, and Blackman High and Riverdale High are likely to be larger than that for a couple of years till you work out of that grandfather. I think we kind of know that. And we actually have the numbers for students that could be grandfathered to the new school if you're interested in that, I just gave you the total tonight, but we can tell you how many by area, if you're interested in that.
From a planning standpoint, uh, which high school do we think is going to get the most growth as far as the future subdivision coming in? Have we any type of planning to delve into?
I think short term will probably be Blackman High, I think long term is a bit of those, just Stewart's Creek High, because that's the most open area. But in the short term, within the, because of the apartment, and the issue is that density around, um, Blackman High School, and they're actually opening up some sections to Thanksgiving and Christmas, they're calling it Home for the Holiday, is the theme for that, that the developers of those apartments, so we're going to see some growth there, which will affect our elementary and our middle, possibly our high school, so, just Christmas.
And with 840 now open around Veterans Parkway, there's such an easy own and, uh, so much available property, open property out there too on Veterans Parkway.
If, if you pick, take some more from Blackman High School, again, I mean, here's your school, you're fairly close, if you come down in this area, you're close unless you go back up in here, or you go out on this side, toward Peter Stewart's Creek High. We've got some numbers for those areas, um...
Mr. Oldham, it's, uh, maybe an unfair question to ask off the cuff, but do you know how many portables are at Smyrna High School?
Do you have that?
Yes, sir.
Seven.
Seven.
Yes, sir.
What about Laverne?
Eleven.
Let's go and get those numbers for Blackman also. Middle school there also, if you have that.
Two at Blackman High.
Two at Blackman.
And Riverdale, I think, has the most.
Seventeen?
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
We, we had the addition of Blackman High, you know, which kind of helped us, uh, just a few years ago. Blackman High at the end of the third month, which was November the 9th, uh, had 23, 73 students. And Riverdale, um, had exactly 2,000. Laverne High had 2,105. And Smyrna High had 1,987. We'll, let's put them a third month in next week's board meeting, if we can do that, it's pretty, we'll just put them a copy of the whole system again.
I'll, I'll go ahead and roll the ball down the field, I, I, I think the changes that are here are logical and appropriate. I'll lay back this fourth.
This is, this is going to be your recommendation?
Uh, as it is right now, unless you see something tonight that you would like to ask us additional information about and consideration.
Before we wrap up, the middle school discussion, uh, that we kind of started into, uh, it's those feeder schools that go into, uh, Stewart's Creek High and Blackman High and, and how we affect those, I think Blackman Middle may be one of our largest concerns. Can you speak to that?
It is. They, because Blackman Middle at the end of the third month had, um, let me do that one, had 1,098, so that, that was certainly a concern for us, you know, at that time, so, um...
And we consider capacity at that school to be 1,000?
About 1,000 is kind of what your colleague can handle fairly well, yes.
And Stewart's Creek Middle?
Stewart's Creek Middle at this point has, um, 841.
Do we have portables at Blackman Middle?
Uh, yes, two, four, yep.
We have six of them.
Is it, is it conceivable, it does seem this way to me, that, uh, some students that will be going to Stewart's Creek High School that also have middle school students may elect to maybe consider a zone waiver into Stewart's Creek Middle School, just so they can have their group together? And that, it strikes me that a few of those, I don't know how many, I don't think it's enough to make a significant difference at Blackman Middle. I'd say there could be 20, 30.
I'd, I'd say so.
That would do that. Especially with the situation that's got.
With the parents who're bringing the, the other child to the high schools, that's certainly logical.
Yes, to follow up on what he said, how, how soon as a board, can we address this? I mean, it's, we, we really need to get, uh, involved for some solution for next school year, wouldn't you think?
For the middle school?
For Blackman Middle?
Um, I think Mr. Morgan can begin working on some things, areas to try to align. First off, once, once we kind of know what the high schools are, to try to align as much as we can so where the feeder school comes directly. And we could bring that back to you to look at, you know, after Christmas, I think, if we wanted to take a look at that.
I, uh, took the preliminary step of already pulling in, uh, all of our middle school students. I don't have the data put together as neat as I would for this kind of meeting, you know, where I can give you, uh, an answer really fast for a number for a particular area, but it is, I am under word looking at, it's kind of all almost part of the process, so...
What does Rock Vale Middle have, population wise, right now?
Rock Vale Middle, Rock Vale Middle is 877.
What about Christiana now?
Christiana Middle has, uh, 821.
So, in, in all honesty, we're closing in on 900 in those, off of those schools, which is really where we should be there, to, to allow more enough growth for two, three years. I mean, if we do much, I mean, the solution, as I see it, is going to have to be, to make some, look at some addition at Blackman Middle, which I don't know if it's rezoned or anything, but over, begin to overcrowd the schools that are there, if they're pushing 900.
But with the core, I mean, is there any way to fix the core where we could serve an addition?
Um, Mr. Carter and I have spoken, if, if we did, um, an addition in Blackman Middle, we would probably do some of what we did at Oakland, Riverdale, um, you would create an area that you could, uh, say sixth grade annex, don't know for sure what that would be, but you would create a... Don't know for sure what that would be, but you would create an area where you could actually feed those students in that area. Wouldn't have to create another kitchen, but you could actually feed them in that area. Um, you have to make additional decisions whether you were looking at, um, a gym or an area or not. But that would have to come into our planning process. Um, Muffinsburg City again, as I mentioned the other night, they're actually, we're, we're supposed to be a meeting today. Uh, they're looking at some land that's out off of ninety-six in that area too. Um, if they build a new elementary school that would open in two thousand and fourteen, it would have to be now. Um, very likely, again, with Newbridge drawing, they would probably be a few more sixth grade students that might elect to stay at the city an extra year. So that, that could, and if you look at the enrollments now, we can see that. For example, let me take Blackman, I'll take Blackman Middle. Um, in their case, over there, there's, theirs is about the same. Sixth grade is three sixty-seven, seventh grade's three forty-four. So many of those are already coming. But that's not true necessarily in other parts of the town. You'll have, like at Oakland Middle, sixth grade's two seventy-one and seventh grade's three eighty-seven. So it kind of depends sometimes on the area. Segal Middle, two hundred and fifty-two sixth graders and four hundred seventh graders. Um, so that, that's another thing that you kind of run into. And Segal Middle is also a thousand and three.
Thing I hate about portables and annexes, it defeats our security protocols.
It's difficult.
And, uh, I mean, add, add, additions, I, I certainly think are appropriate, but I, I would, I would certainly like to stay away from annexes if we could.
Well, is, would it be possible to annex, add an annex, but literally have it connected to where it went down and, and that extra even area so forth was, was built as part of the addition, as opposed to being separate?
But the other Saturday when we rolled around, uh, Gary talked about the areas. And one of the, the, one of the best areas was not right adjacent to the building. Um, we just have to see, because the other, other issues, I still have to allow that Fire Marshal with the exterior exits, you know, the doors and also when you start looking at it, he actually has, our architect looking at some of that area's now to see. So what, what comes into play is that emergency exits and things like that. When your building wasn't really designed for a wing, if that's fine. A, and until he reports on that, kind of lets us know, and maybe we'll know a little bit more by the fourth, I think, of December, that would be a really pertinent question for us there. To see if that's possible or not, I'm not, not positive.
You got the building made in line, fifth, sixth?
It, it, it's six.
Sixth.
Sixth, okay. Stand corrected, it's December sixth.
If we looked at the area left of Veterans Parkway and brought Rockville Middle up to, which is already up there, Highway ninety-six, that brings Stewart's Creek down to maybe the other side of eight forty, sound like we have for the high school zoning. Would that not free up a little more for the Blackman Middle School?
It should. Your middle school, a third of your middle school changes every year. Because the eighth grade leaves, the sixth grade comes in. So, um, you hear, you have fairly quick turnaround. I mean, you're not typically dealing with the grandfathering and that sort of thing. But even if you did, you turn around, it was still much quicker for you of what's happening.
One of the concerns that the public raised in the, um, meetings that we've had up to this point was a bit of frustration of the number of times that the board has to rezone.
Yes.
And it's certainly indicative of the rate of growth in our county. And those two things go hand in hand. When we're growing at forty percent, uh, growth rate, then, uh, then that, those rezoning occurrences have to, have to happen. But if it was possible for us to overlay some of this Stewart's Creek rezoning into, uh, how it would appropriately impact middle school as well, uh, before it goes into effect in the two thousand thirteen school year, I, I, I think it would be a, a good move on the board in responsive to the public's interest.
Some of that's on this map as it is now. Would you like for me to put this, the second map that you have up? And then he can explain some of that to you if you like, which is some of this and show you the issues we have right now.
I've kind of got a, a variation of, of what you're looking at, uh, in front of you on here to somewhere to put together very quickly. The darker lines are, are existing, uh, high school lines. And the colors are, are the current middle school lines. And for the most part, those lines match in a good percentage of the areas, uh, on this southern end of ninety-six, which I believe is kind of where, where y'all are talking about. One of the things to keep in mind when we're gathering information for numbers is, uh, and Mr. Odom and I talked about this before he was the director, was the inconsistency of the amount of sixth grade students that we get from, from the city every year. In a way, it's kind of a crap shoot to, you know, to determine, uh, a solid number when you're trying to project from one year to another. So that, that would be one thing that I would say keep in mind as, if, if we move into that part of the process. Uh, they've also changed their student information system, uh, over the last summer. So I'm not sure what kind of data, how usable that data's gonna be when I get it. I haven't seen it yet. I haven't worked with the product yet. And that would be the next step that I was gonna take anyway, was request the data from them. And then I might have to massage it. Usually their data's pretty clean and, um, I can get it into our system very easily, but I have no idea yet what our goals are.
Do we know how many sixth graders are in the city system today?
I, I don't have that with me. But I, I can find out if any.
I'm just kind of curious.
About seventy-seven hundred total, ten, three, six, I think, so. I'm sure there's a few less six in some of the numbers.
Yeah, I mean, if, you know, what was actually in the city system as sixth graders present.
Anybody else?
We looked at one other area there, uh, had Mr. Odom bring this up on the map here. We looked at the right side of Veterans Parkway, zoning that area with Blackman High School. Left side, Veterans, so that Stewart's Creek High School. We netted, uh, forty students in there. Still, to me, it's not enough for Blackman High School. I'm just real concerned with that area growing like it is, that we're gonna really have some, any issues there, out there.
The board members were sent two maps, um, and I don't know if you have them with you. But basically, uh, we did study those two areas. And, uh, from Veterans Parkway to the east, uh, in total, there were, including this little five that's right here that we've already put in, there are fifty-five. And in this complete area up here, including this little section, so it would make it all the way over to Veterans, there would be fifteen of them. Now, if you were to go further down and pull in the Berkshire subdivision and south all the way to Franklin, there are two hundred and eleven inside of that. So you're talking about a total from Brinkley to Franklin and up to our existing proposal, um, a total of two hundred and sixty-six additional students that you could pull into Stewart's Creek.
Yeah, but I think we get on the other side of Veterans, that's awful close to Blackman High School there.
Right, and, and exactly. But over here, at total, there are only fifty-five. And most of them are right, right there in that subdivision.
Is there any future development going on out there?
Not, I, I haven't seen anything that would be on the scale that would, that, we, I mean, we have this, this potential right here, which is, is a developed, a developed subdivision. The stuffs are sticking up out of the ground.
Yeah.
You're probably talking about somewhere between a, a middle to upper, upper middle, level home that can go in there. And I don't know exactly how many lots are available or would be available. Um, but it's in bankruptcy at the moment. But if it ever springs to light, it, it's gonna be a substantial subdivision.
Is that over Stewart's Creek, correct?
Yes, the way we have it closed now, they would go to Stewart's Creek.
Yeah, has, uh, Ms. Vick had any comment at all about where this seventeen hundred ninety-four figure is? Has she?
She, she expects that, that next year with the grandfathering, because we're sending their son from Riverdale, um, she's, you know, maybe a couple of hundred less or so. I don't, I don't, I think she can bear what we do now. I think that, that's, that's a possibility.
I, I, I guess my, my question was, is, is she feel like what we're doing is addressing, should we do more? Should we do what we're doing?
Well, I mean, she's concerned that, that it may not help enough. I didn't see what she said, but that, again, that's, uh, but she realizes that. I mean, she's got teachers on her charts today, that's simply the number out there. Classroom, you know, they go from one to another, and a vacant period occurs. When you have the largest high school in the state, it's sort of thing, is the reality to it.
Do we have a, of course, what's problematic is we have a hundred plus that come in each year above and beyond.
She'd go about a hundred and sixty.
Right. Um, but after this two years of grandfathering, uh, the rising juniors and seniors, do we see kind of a dip there for a little bit before it starts climbing? Or is that, if we get a hundred and sixty, it won't matter?
Right, again, I, I'd have to really look harder at the middle school numbers to see how that's, how that would play out over five years.
Her comment to me is, I think for foreseeable future, I will be close to two thousand with the grandfathering, and then by the time you get to two years of grandfathering, very likely there's been some growth during that time. It's gonna kind of be in that particular range, and that would not surprise me. But you got the same issue up at Riverdale.
I assume we're building Rockville High School.
Well, the hard fact is that no matter what we do, uh, Blackman High School is just gonna be bulging at the seams for a while, I guess.
There's room for more apartments in that area too, because there's some more vacant land there, so.
Any other comments?
Would you like for us to, um, admit at the last meeting to comment numbers and alternatives that are there? We can do whatever we like. Just to create additional options.
Where are the factors of board?
I was just thinking, frees up forty more students out of Blackman. That's one portable maybe, I don't know, but.
At least some we can consider, get some time.
Mark, that was kind of dotted in.
That, we're talking about the space right there, to the right of that five.
He's talking about, my understanding is in this area right up here, isn't it?
You know, that, here it flows back to the direction, and you're gonna have to go away from Stewart's Creek to turn back around and go back that direction. And that, that, it does, there's not a good avenue going back in the direction we want to go.
People in, in this area, if we do get the, uh, Rockville High School down the road, the public will find it terribly good. And, yeah, it's certainly a good possibility.
Mr. Young, you want, Mr. Odom to look at that, or?
I just thought it might be an option to look at it.
Does Mark Shiftey go anywhere?
I'm just, I guess, because I've seen the kids come in and the growth that we've had in the last few years, that it's just, the numbers are just, I, I can guess, I can see more growth happening over there, especially with the driving I've done the last six months. It's, it's ready to spring up over on that side of the world, as I call it. I don't see us, um, parents are gonna be upset one way or another. Because some of them have been going to the same, same community. Communities are, are gonna be split up, and I'm sorry for that, but it's gonna have to happen, I see that.
And I would say again tonight, if we have different people watching on television or something, it's, it's not just the distance and that, because it becomes an issue of even what time of day you have to start a lunch period to get two thousand plus students through a lunch period. So the infrastructure for a building starts playing on everything that you do and starts impacting the instructional program. And so that's one of the things we try to protect. And so why we have to go is to try to bring some of that back into line.
I think, like you said, Mr. Odom, in this Blackman area here, you got so much density, uh,
Right around the school?
Right around the school, and you got such a, if you look, it's a, a small area compared to Stewart's Creek. So you keep on, like I said, you keep on coming back, uh, keep coming down, uh, you know, towards Blackman High School, and keep going, uh, students out, you got a pretty good distance to Stewart's Creek High.
We actually, I believe, when we built the Blackman Complex as a schools, some of that wasn't even in the city limits.
It's kind of out in the middle of nowhere for a while.
It was not in, in Muffinsburg City limits at all.
Yeah.
No, there was, some of them, the only way you could get to it was off of ninety, yeah, ninety-six. There was no way.
Anybody else got any other thing for staff to look at?
Well, a positive note, I commandeered your assistant superintendent over construction and maintenance today, and I got to go through the Stewart's Creek, uh, complex, a building, and, uh, it, it's incredible. I, I just, I, it's just a magnificent, uh, facility and really kind of breathtaking. Uh, you know, with the, uh, the career technical areas and the, uh, you know, and, and looks like they're right on schedule, the best that I could tell from listening to him talk. So, uh, it, it's just, it's just gonna be an incredible, incredible facility.
Everybody good? All right, Mr. Odom, uh, we'll come, come back December fourth and, uh, go make a formal recommendation at that time, we'll look at what Mr. Young wanted to look at and, uh, hopefully come away that night with, uh, some kind of plan. Anything else? Mr. Tack?
The, uh, grandfathering of the, possible grandfathering of students beyond the. The grandfathering of the, possible grandfathering of students beyond the ten, eleven, twelve. We're gonna address that decision with the second, do you mean?
I was prepared to talk about it on the fourth and make a recommendation or make a motion at that time.
There's approximately one hundred and twenty-two siblings in that area we've got that would be related to Blackman High School. And I, Mr. Morgan, I think that would be good.
Yes.
And those are rising freshmen who are right behind rising juniors and seniors.
If I understood you correctly, on Stewart's Creek, with low enrollment, you'll more or less probably have some, you'd have a lot of zone waivers.
That's typically what we do. And when Mr. Evans does this, we have certain schools, we have the list just closed. And if there's capacity in a building, that it helps us overall, we allow students to attend. And there's, again, he can, he told us before how many zones, if you could question, we get a year, and so it's over a thousand, so.
There have been times in the past where, the last one we did was the two minutes open, the open minutes open. And we, we still had a little room left of Christiana Middle School after doing that. But we did not allow those in just that first year, because the board wanted to protect and tend to it. It was ultimately discredited. Because if most of the students had of Christiana, we're trying to balance some of those, those numbers. But then we opened up year two, they actually developed and settled down some of those. There's precedent on both sides.
I would think, personally, I'd think with new high schools and everything, you'll probably, you'll probably have a lot of students that wanna go.
I would think so.
On the high school.
I would think so.
And we may have a little bit better numbers than what we may, than what we're thinking a little bit.
We're looking at, probably making a recommendation to you about for earlier enrollment to try to get people to commit. Maybe with a kind of name, because moving resources, personnel and that sort of thing, you know, you just can't go on into summer. I mean, you just have to, so we may ask that people elect to choose the grandfathering option. If they do so, maybe by something like March first or something like that. Does people, better than two months to look at it, you know, or three, to see what might do?
Is that something that you would want to do on the fourth, is go ahead and make that recommendation?
We're working on that. We can do that. It's whatever you...
What we talked about today was, it doesn't necessarily have to be part of the board motion. But if we had those plans already worked out, which is what we were planning to do, then we can announce actually to the public long before that the board makes a decision. And parents have pretty much now just to start thinking about what they want to do. Then we can also advertise it in the four, at the high schools. And it works without having to, um, the messaging system, so the parents realize it's a dead option. We just need that for planning purposes, Lord. But we text, we're a teacher, all those sorts of things.
I think it'd also be helpful to project a timeline as to, as when you expect teachers to be named, coaches to be named and so forth. And I don't know when that might be. I don't know that it matters to us. You guys can work that out. But it would be nice if the public knew what those projected timelines would be.
I suspect with coaches and that sort of thing, and Mr. Harold here, that when he starts on January first, that you'll start seeing some of those positions, assistant principals, coaches, that sort of thing. Now, the number of the teachers and that sort of thing, we have some growth that's built in it who will, you know. One of the things that we said, we try to look at Laverne High and make a few more there, staff it a little bit differently in the fall if that change. So we're looking at that information, but I think you're gonna start seeing some of that before March first. Bestly in the key positions.
Everybody good? All right, I'd like to, hope everybody has a good Thanksgiving and let's see everybody back here, what, next Tuesday? A regular work session and board meeting on Thursday, so nothing else, we're adjourned.